Louis three bet.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at. Middle position or flattening range or three betting range, what we should be doing with our range facing early position open. What do you do here with this A seven? A three bet, well, that's not gonna be very good. The deeper you are, more you are like mixing, right? If you three bet everything, it's no good, right?
I do it as an expert.
I'd rather three better to call.
Yeah, me too.
So I mean, they're gonna three better fold. I don't really wanna fold.
Think it's mixing?
I do.
Uh, I think it's, it has some folds.
It could be folding, yes.
That's mixing all three, I think. So let's go with the three bet. It's never folding, right?
Ever folds. Yeah, I don't really like just calling this deep in, in these spots. But it's good, so I should do it more.
Yeah, A six is folding some.
Say six, right?
Yeah, it's the worst.
Alright, so you're supposed to call. Very ten easy, but here we are.
Well, fifty fifty.
Okay.
I think we're gonna size, like, if we see bed here, I think we wanna go on a larger side, so we're gonna check actually a decent amount, I think. And we're betting on the larger side.
I agree. Third pair is not that exciting of a bet here.
You guys check.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I want to check. LP is, like, how did you even let us check?
No, but it's like, yeah, it's third bear, right?
I wanna keep checking. He can just, like, still have nines or tens or a weak eight or a weak jack.
Like, we can't really exploit the machine by betting any two, so.
I mean, maybe we can get some calls from, like, king, queen, queen, ten, king, ten type hands. But that's like all that we really beat that we get called, but we can get called by pocket fives. So if we bet, this point is pretty thin.
And at this point, I don't wanna get raised either, so I definitely wanna realize all of my equity at this point, cuz it's pretty good.
I mean, fair enough. I think you would actually just call if raised. I mean, it sucks, but like, you just still call. Um, yeah, I mainly wanna check. I wouldn't hate a bet. I think you can get called by, like, little ace queen.
I think checking is reasonable. We're very deep. We have a weak hand. We're naturally inclined to bluff, right? Checking seems fine.
Oh, no, if I'm betting, it's for value. It's for value.
Then you bluff sometimes.
Nines, there you go.
Pocket nine.
It's fine.
Okay, yeah, we don't lose much, right, if we don't bet? But this one, we play tall?
It can three bet, yeah, yeah, it can three bet some. At a hundred bigs, you split across a bunch of your whole range. You're not really that polarized, right? Like, almost your entire continuing range mixes between raises and calls. Check. We want to bet hands that will often make very nutty hands by river, and this hand is not gonna make very nutty hands by river very much. Having just a backdoor would matter a lot when we're a hundred effective.
Yeah, so you don't wanna bet here?
No, cuz even his better aces are hands, like, he has, like, ace, jack, ace, king, king, jack type hands that are just gonna call, like, king, nine, like, what's, what's worse than us? Or what's better than us that folds? Pocket sixes, maybe? Check.
Okay. Yeah, no better raise folds, right?
Yeah, no better, I mean, ace nine, maybe, but it's so, so thin.
King is, that's pretty bad for us, which is.
Pretty bad. It's pretty bad. We can get out of here. We have diamonds. We have one pair type hands to continue with.
Just call here?
I think it's gonna mix still. What does it say?
It said. Majority.
Okay, mainly call. I guess, yeah, like seven blockers. You know, you could think about stabbing this board. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that we were forty effective here and not a hundred. At a hundred, I think you three bet this fair bit. Yeah, also at forty, I don't really need to bet this hand. On the flop that much. At a hundred, I would actually kind of like to start bluffing this because it's gonna make a nice triple with various runouts.
Okay, so fifty fifty here. What do we bet the most? There, board. There, mono. There, mono. Fair that mono. What is this? Fair that mono, okay.
Also, some kind of, like, low to medium stuff. I see some, like, nine, eight, deuce, ten, five, four, kind of, yeah, medium stuff. Jack, seven, five.
And then we bet small on, like, a queen, five, deuce? Okay, so queen. Queen and ten seems to be the best cards.
I think the more interesting way to, to sort this is not by percentage of bet twenty, but by percentage of check. Cuz we're gonna have some boards that we stab a lot at, that we like bet fifty-five more. It's not sorting by checks, though.
Yeah?
No, but it's not.
What do you wanna see? The most checks are here?
Yeah, but it's, it's not quite the most check. Yeah, whatever. No, cuz it goes down and up a little bit, you know, like, there's seventy-one and sixty-nine and seventy-one. So I don't get what it's doing.
It's just one board, no?
No, it's still, it's still sorting by B twenty. You can see on the B twenty column, that's the one that actually goes smoothly high to low. There it is. That's the one.
Morning, guys.
Good, Roger.
What's up? What are we doing?
Lot calling in position.
Nice.
It's a lot of ace, I board, king, I board. Oh, we'll check a lot here, I guess.
See, but the double backdoors just makes his hand a pretty, it's actually triple backdoors, makes his hand a pretty appealing bluff cuz it makes them not straight on eight, nine. It makes them not straight on king, queen. So like, you want some low equity hands in your bluffing range, and this is a low equity hand.
It's better.
I don't know. I kinda wanna. Thinking about bluffing this. Thinking about bluffing it. I don't know, it's kinda weird to raise after checking back flop.
Maybe I'm wrong, but. Raising against under the gun here after a polarized bet?
Uh, I mean, it's not that polarized. Check and then bet sixty percent is kinda whatever. I mean, he has strong hands in this range, but like, I mean, for value, I'd be betting, like, sets, an ace, queen. Two pairs for bluffs.
This is maybe why, uh, need more training, but I would call here.
I mean, calling is gonna be plus E V, obviously, you have a big, you have a big draw, it's fine. I mean, it makes sense, like, a draw with no showdown value is gonna be a hand that shows up as a bluff sometimes, right?
One hand, uh, from the flop, thus, under the gun, right, checks. Thus check.
He checks, like, half of his range.
I think he's mixing very hard.
Yeah, he mixes, he mixes everything.
Oh, yeah, because he's out of position, he should check.
Yeah, so he'll have ace, kings here sometimes, and he'll have king, jack, like, you know. And we're definitely targeting sort of like king, jack, queen, jack, king, queen type hands, like, unpaired hands that are better than us. And that's why I'm happy to do this with the jack high. Jack high is very little showdown value. Well, then we river for this bullshit, like.
I think it's an easy call.
Probably a call, but it's a crappy call.
It's more, it's more. I lose sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, you lose a lot, whatever. You only have to win one in five, right? This should be, then, let's go, put it in.
How about folding?
I think the solver is just gonna find enough bluffs here again. I think he does have, like, king, jack type hands, queen, jack type hands, and.
You got the jack in your hand.
Yeah, but like, but like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, miss flush draws here, but two of them.
I think the jack is bad. The heart is bad. It's easy for him just to have an ace.
Sure. It is, but he's just supposed to be balanced, so like, is this high enough up in a range? Kinda thinks so, cuz we also have a bunch of spade and heart draws that are unpaired here, like, we have.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Queen, jack of hearts. Yeah, it's super thin, like, you, you weren't crazy to think it was super thin. It is.
It is a sliver. Yeah.
Uh, maybe I.
I think you three bet this, like, sixty or seventy percent of the time. I randomize this by suits. Nope, you bet forty.
Way around them.
Yeah. Then jacks is gonna be mostly through bet, like, it's gonna be, like, reversed, it's gonna be like sixty-something percent through bet, thirty percent callers.
I wanna blast this into.
Yeah, I wanna bet this, I wanna bet this pretty big.
Yeah, eighty-three, maybe five, fifty-five.
Maybe even one twenty-five, no?
Uh, the thing is, it's, like, I don't know, but it is double straight draw, which leans me towards big bets. It's kind of irrelevant straight draws, though, cuz, like, we're expecting that low jack has a lot of, kind of, like, king, jack type hands. Um, which means if it was, like, if the board was, like, ten, seven, something, and we held jacks, there would be a lot more dry, I think. And I think this board is, you know, a little bit less dry than, like, ten, seven, five, for example.
Though, I don't think he has overpass here a lot because they put bet himself, bro.
Uh, no, out of position is, out of position is pretty much always gonna be balanced here. You're gonna check a lot, and he's gonna bet some.
How do we check back with this hand? Maybe we have to respect his overpair advantage.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that we're just gonna get stacked sometimes, that's, that's life.
It's really betting small here or checking it up. I wouldn't, how?
What are you doing with a ten or diamonds, ten of clubs? The suits are different.
I think that's a pretty fair. I think that's a pretty fair bet, yeah. Bet more often.
Like, yeah, like, probably always betting ten or diamonds, ten of clubs.
So then randomized via the suits. Yeah, so it is kind of this one with the double flush draw.
Yeah, it's just our blockers.
We have death phenomenon.
Cuz here we end up on this turn, and like, the ace is scary, but we still have a good draw, and so like, that's kinda nice. If he's holding kings without a spade, we have a real chance of getting him.
Yeah, action killer for everybody, right?
Yeah, just check.
Yeah, just check. And, yeah, again, if, even if he's holding. Kings, without the king of spade, we did not get there. I don't know, man.
What do you mean, you don't know? You're gonna have to.
It's just a ridiculous bet.
I mean, we're never gonna win, right? But that doesn't.
I mean, hopefully, we're gonna win fifteen percent of the time or something.
I don't think we win fifteen percent here.
If you don't, then you, then click fold, that's the thing.
I'm sorry, I, I'm.
Clicking call means you must.
Win zero percent of the time, and we gotta call.
I was wondering if we ever raise.
Maybe raising is better cuz we never win.
Nah, solver says you went a little bit. Yeah, I wanna, like, I threw that this one based on suits, but calling is fine.
So you three bet suits in particular?
Yep.
Isn't that how you mix?
With the suit?
Yep. Okay.
I'm just betting small here. I think.
Yeah, we can get called by, like, we can get called by, like, ace, jack, king, jack, right?
Yeah, we can call a check raise.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just does everything.
His king, his king in this range. We don't.
One blunder at thirty, and it looks like.
Not a blunder. It's a bloody mix, not blunder. Yeah, no, but. I'll show you some hand histories if you wanna see blunders, alright?
Alright, so what do we do here? We check. Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Either way is fine.
What do you mean? It's checking, like, sixty percent of the time, the rest is betting, it's fine to bet.
Yeah, it's not a blender at all. Like, he has ace, jack in range, and he's check calls up. We can get called by worse.
In game, I think betting is gonna be better if they won't defend appropriately.
Yep. Or they'll just, like, overplay, like, ten, nine, kinda things, just like ridiculous hands.
Now, I'm mostly betting small and sizing up some.
That seems.
Thirty-three, fifty-five, but probably fine.
Always sizing up.
And checking.
I hate checking again in game.
Yeah, why do we check? That, why I just wanna check here?
Solvers just super protected. It doesn't wanna end up on river where it's, like, bet all of its kings, and then the ace rolls off, and you're just obliterated. So solver, like, really protects itself down every branch of every tree.
I want the ace to roll off. We don't have straight.
No, 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 but when you've bet it, like, if you bet it, it's, like, on the checking line, like, it doesn't want to end up on that checking line where you get demolished.
We just have to call it, get raised.
This sucks. We're definitely calling.
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't suck, it's worth five.
And this hand has been very painful for me.
Okay, but like, look at it. We induced him to bluff eventually with a kind of trashy hand, and that was the way we made the most money from that hand.
Alright, like, forty percent of the time?
What's the strategy here, basically?
Or maybe a hair more.
Much like that? What's the idea behind it? Like, we call and we check, and we check, and we make, like, the best hand or something like that.
Because you kind of had a, like, that is, is kind of like a hard hand to bet because you.
It wasn't that hard for me to bet it at all.
You don't get called by that much worse, and you just fold him off of all of his trash, and like, his trash ended up throwing up bluff out.
He has all the nuts and all this.
The pocket fives that would have folded to us ended up finding a bluff cuz they had a flush blocker, and like, we've made whatever, three big blinds from that hand.
So we need to induce.
With. Yeah, I mean, with.
Sometimes you're gonna turn two pair, then we lose.
Three, three bet more often than call, but that's okay.
I mean, it's like, if he has ten, eight suited, and he, we bet, he's gonna raise at some frequency and just jam the river and put us in a box, so we had, had to fold the best hand sometimes. What was the three bet percentage on this?
Sixty.
Oh, that's what I said, cool.
I know it was really cagey before, but I still like betting this. I, I really like betting it against our opponents who play pretty face up.
Yeah, I'm mostly betting here. Almost always betting.
I think it's fun.
I can unders- I can understand why, for balance purposes, you need to have some jacks in your check background.
Thirty-three percent, some fifty-five. I don't think any larger than that.
I would always blast this.
I think rainbow should push you towards a smaller sizing, though. So that's a thing they're taking into consideration.
Like, I would never be here. I would be three betting and then blasting and then enjoying my day, but now here we are.
How much do you wanna blast?
Everything.
Nah, I see, like, they have aces and kings, right? And we don't.
Yeah.
That are checking and calling, and then, hey, what is this that we're doing here? You know? It's very, very difficult.
I think you just bet small here.
Hey, you can play to have a gamble. Okay, some, other one with pocket tens was. This one mainly bets.
Just bet small when you call in position. Cuz they could have it.
Exactly.
Have it. Can somebody really have it, like, they're gonna shit?
I think checking out a position is not that hard. I think, like, there are lines where it's hard for humans to stay balanced, but like, hitting the flop, I, I check out a position a lot in that situation.
Yeah, I check out a position more often than I should. Yeah, exactly. My check raise percentage on the flop is like eighteen percent.
Yeah, cuz I think people, people just, like, stab ridiculous hands, and then you get to put in a check raise and just shut them down, like, with both bluffs, with, overpairs, with good top pairs.
One hundred percent.
Yeah.
I'm just checking back now.
Yeah, I think this mostly is gonna check a ton. It might have some time.
Yeah, you can, I think, yeah, I was gonna say, you can keep betting a little bit cuz we expect that we're up against, like, ace, high, ten X. So we don't really expect that we got floated by a lot of queen X.
It's hard for us, queen, yeah.
Yeah, ace queen.
Queen is the best for us.
He's got, like, ace queen, maybe some king, queen, queen, jack, which we block, queen nine suited, like.
It's all gonna be the suited side, like, he's folding the offsuit rant, so, and we're double blocking it. I think if we have, like, jack of clubs, it's gonna check more often.
And I think, um, like, if you range him after he calls flop, he has a lot of, like, ten X, pocket nines, ace, king, those are kind of some of the hands that I can see pretty frequently. And obviously, this card did not improve those hands.
And our range is still protected. We have ace queen in range still, too, so we're still kinda protected. We have sets.
Yeah, we stabbed with a mix of, exactly, we have sets, we stabbed with a mix of queen X. Uh, one of our, some of our bluffs are, like, queen, jack type hands, right? That's a pretty good book for us on flop.
But under the gun is also ace queen, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why.
Ten pair, we're gonna bet big. If a low card comes, a four, three, five. All, all a low card, we bet big on.
Yeah, so basically, banks, blanks for under the gun, uh, range.
Queen, we bet a lot on it, but we bet small.
Margie.
Yeah, and then, and then also, don't, don't go big on the straightening cards, like, seven, nine, jack. Cuz they mix up equities a lot.
It's very tough. We're betting fifty fifty here.
Yeah, cuz we still got a lot of value and bluff. We, we got a lot, we got a lot, a lot to borrow on this texture when we flatten position, if you think about that texture, right?
I, uh.
The queen, okay. What the fuck?
Go back.
Bad, right? The jack is bad.
No, we block jack nine, too. We block jack nine.
Before you click it, can we see our turn range? I wanna see how protected we are, and just think if we have to call this or not.
I think we need to.
Yeah, maybe.
Have a first solver probably, but in reality, I don't know.
Like, if we are checking, we don't have really two pair. We don't have straights. Like, do we have aces, kings?
No, we flat it three flop.
Alright. So. King, queen. We have some queens, not much. I mean, uh, like, we got some. We gotta call this, I think.
Well, what do you think is better, pockets nine or pockets?
Wait, this is our turn range, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think nines and jacks are the same hand, we're bluff catching.
No, I don't think so. I think it's very different.
They both block bluffs. I, I think they'll, I think not, I think jacks are better than nines.
Jacks are worse.
I think nines wanna, like, if he has, well, he doesn't have that many nine highs, so maybe jacks are, yeah.
Jack, you bless ace, jack. You block king, jack.
King, jack, yeah.
Block like a bunch of stuff here.
He's got a king nine, right?
I think nines are, nines are better.
Nine is not really in the mix, I think. You know, the nine seems to be less of a blocker than the jack, maybe I'm wrong.
It's close.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think you're right, but I, I still think it's M I D mixing here, mixing call.
Uh, he done said we call, no.
You can, yeah.
No, jack is bad.
What a crazy. The nines.
Okay, nines don't do much better, but they call more? Nines.
It likes the ten. Ace ten, for some reason, some. Ace fives, I mean, it's thin, like.
That tells me that we're expecting that he has sets of tens sometimes.
Yeah, exactly. You're blocking, uh, ace, or sets of tens and queen ten, when you have a ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I guess, like, we were thinking about the straight, but maybe the straight isn't that relevant, and like, sets are.
Well, we recognize that calling with the jack was in grade because of blockers, right?
Oh, so it's just kind of like, not an amazing hand.
I mean, it's a three X pot jam, you don't have to defend that much anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
Better off calling with a ten here.
Look at it, we just, like, snap him off with pocket fives.
Or an eight.
What's a set?
Ten, nine. Ten nines make any big blinds per hundred. That's like a mandatory call, I think.
And then look at nine, eight versus AC. That's where you see the blocker.
What suits are the ten, nine?
Hearts, no.
Hearts.
Hearts and clubs mostly. Hearts are the best. The hearts are the only ones making money. You gotta call hearts.
But it's also the tens with a kicker that blocks the straight. Nine or a jack.
Plus five.
Oh. Wow, he got max value from pocket jacks.
Fold.
Yeah, fold, pull pocket deuces. What, uh, what's the worst pair that you call here?
I could lose, never lose.
We call in pocket deuces, hundred big blinds deep?
Yeah, I didn't raise for a hundred, yeah.
You never lose.
In practice, I'm probably calling, like, fours or fives.
I'm calling deuce a hundred big blinds deep.
Yeah.
Make a set.
Make a set. Enjoy life. Or a straight, maybe.
I'm probably betting this too much.
King is bad for us. I'm not betting here.
Yeah, you can stab a little bit.
And give up if he calls.
I wanna catch it.
Put a little pressure on, like, pocket fours.
On a ten? We call or we raise? Fold. Folding is okay.
I like raise.
I wanna call a raise. Let's say we call. Hit the deuce. Hit the deuce.
We, we did not hit the deuce.
Now we have to bluff, I think.
Can't check, you can't check.
Can we not?
But big.
We win.
Uh, but our, our blockers are, our blockers are ridiculous. I would rather.
A bunch of his.
Like, ace nine, ace nine, I would rather be bluffing.
I'm checking.
Always better. You can't check this hand. If you're getting here with river, you can't check this hand.
I thought we could.
Think we have to try to fold out threes, fours, fives, sixes.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Roger. That's a very good idea.
And every once in a while, we get looked at by a naked ace.
Mostly call.
Yeah, you can call, you can three bet. I think it's worth pointing out, a hundred big blinds. Look at the size of that three beds, about three point five X. Still see people in my games only doing three X here. Uh, you need to go bigger when you're deep.
Can we raise this?
Yeah, you can raise it a little bit. Um, I just don't love that we don't really have much working for us in terms of, uh, backdoors. But you're at your best ace, your best top pair, so you can still raise.
I think that makes us wanna raise because we have the club. I think, like, if we had ace, queen of clubs, we'd raise the most.
I think we'll just call.
I think it's.
I think it's gonna, it's gonna find some, some raises. You. Value.
Seventy-five to twenty.
Is it raising more with ace, queen of clubs?
I think we're deep enough where your raising range goes into hands that actually have backdoors. And pretty much no difference, clubs.
So back to the offsuit. Yeah, ace of clubs, queen of spades, ace of, yeah, ace of clubs is raising more often. We have to raise.
Against this tiny bet, yeah, we could, we could.
Just give him a little, give him a little juice.
It's only gonna call, like, thirty percent of the time. Never mind.
Wow.
How we have to call, we can't raise.
Ridiculous line.
Too many two pairs.
Why aren't we raising here?
Or not?
Why aren't we?
On the river with the nuts?
This is the falling simulation, we don't have.
There's two pairs, there's sets, there's a straight on board, like he he is allowed to have better.
This is under the gun, army.
I mean, this is kind of a sweet line for him to barrel with aces and try and induce.
What happens when you raise and get jammed on?
And we have, I think we have to fold that, so that's a raise too.
Wow, we're beating him.
Yeah, minimum value, nice.
Great.
Thought we had Broadway the straight there.
Nope.
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 Well, Arnie, this is gonna be good for you.
Just call.
Did you, did you guys read our hand?
I thought we had ace queen.
We did, but Queen Jack was a straight, now ace queen.
You gotta.
Oh, you're right.
King ten.
You gotta.
That's where you like value bluff your hand and you're like putting a huge raise and you get him to fold better and you're like, oh shit.
I'm gonna check and we're gonna call, even though all, uh every one of your senses, Arnie, is gonna say bet, bet big.
A big here, no, this is a call.
We're gonna check and we're gonna bet small. Right? Because it's uh that's what it is today. So we're not folding. Even if all of your senses say fold.
Yeah, it's a bad card.
We're not gonna fold.
Uh, I don't know.
But the real question is, I have a question, okay? Would you rather call with eight nine or pocket nine?
I think they're pretty much the same hand. Um I'd rather call without a heart.
I don't think they're the same.
I don't know, I don't think nines or a nine in her hand is good right now, right?
Nine is pretty bad and any hand with a pair of eight is a lot better.
Like.
Eight, eight.
We block sets of eight.
Yeah.
Alright.
Right, cuz he's gonna have Jack nine, he's gonna have nine, ten as gloves, right?
See, nine eight versus nine?
Yeah, mm hmm.
Or ten eight? Not aware mixing.
But then it will not have much range, I think.
Well, if we're mixing, it means I'm out because this fuck, this thing here always has it.
Maybe he's.
Oh, it doesn't have it now, of course.
Ace and was the blowout, I think, you know, but other than that.
At my surprise, not at all. Let's call. Cuz we're chilling today. Uh why is it so slow? Let's make it turbo.
It's cuz we didn't three bet the tens.
We didn't three, it's crazy, Arnie.
Yes, oh.
Oof, yeah. I predict some shitty runouts.
We need it then. Check.
Just check.
Just check, no, don't bluff.
Break my wrist checking.
You have lots of, you have lots of King Jack, Jack ten type hands that can bluff here. This hand does not need a bluff.
We don't want to blow up the pot, we just have tens.
No.
We have to take a showdown.
Yeah, take a showdown. He can have pocket eights, he can have Jack ten, yeah, pocket sevens, cool.
Easy.
Um.
We're just, we bet this like kind of a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say fifty fifty, but okay, it's twenty five percent, whatever.
Uh, we can raise.
I'm raising here.
I'm only, I just wanna call and be happy.
Yeah.
You're allowed, you're allowed to call with overs and spades, but without showdown value, I kinda wanna raise a lot.
I agree.
And you can keep calling, you've, you picked up a gutter now to go with, so like you just have.
I'm raising.
Yeah.
Louis just turned into a calling station, he isn't like aggression anymore.
Well, we probably raised more if we were shorter stacked with the Jack ten on that flop, right? Than a hundred?
No.
I think vice versa.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think it can cut both ways. It's true to put in a hundred, you do kind of what good flushes and that gets a little scary if you start putting in a hundred big blinds.
Uh when you're shallow, you wanna realize your uh equity in position.
I agree, I agree.
Oh, this is just a check fold now. We should have put aggression on future streets. We can't bluff.
Disagree. Cuz.
Not even should have, you're supposed to have this in your, in your, in your call range, so you know.
If we think about it, we can still get Queen nines and ace highs.
You can't bluff this, no.
We can't.
I don't know, we have some like, we have some nine X that's been calling along.
We got.
We have value.
The nine, Jack nine, ten nine.
You're not bluffing spades.
We block all of his nines cuz he doesn't have nines other than Jack nine and ten nine.
You're not blocking or bluffing spades.
King nine is blocked.
You're still not bluffing spades.
And then hearts are blocked and clubs are blocked.
I think we might have to bluff this hand after him checking.
I think he'll bluff some spades. I don't think it's true that you'll bluff zero spades.
I feel like this is a genius bluff. Am I stupid?
Nah, I think it's okay.
No, man.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh. Well, he checked turn and river, right? This is a hand that.
No, he he bet turn, he bet turn then checked river when the second card paired. This is a spot where we wanna go kinda crazy with range, like we have boats, we have nine X, so.
But he will call us, look us up for ace high boat, huh? That's fine.
No, he's gonna fold here.
Yeah.
Unless he's got a.
We're getting him off pocket jacks. Okay, we, oh, we got him off. That was, we did successfully bluff him. Oh my god, happened.
So we're gonna. Um, most, mostly three bet, some call.
Yeah. So Louis, are you just on the passive side of the game tree today? Is that the plan?
Yes.
That's fair. It's, it's good to remember that like these hands, like the previous one, you're just allowed to call a lot in position as well, so.
I'm trying to talk to myself today, Tim.
Alright, King Jack is an easy call here. Uh I don't really.
I think the most beneficial thing would be to try to guess the frequencies that would be splitting, cuz if you, if you. Like if you're pure calling, you're making a mistake if you're three betting, you're making.
Uh Nick, you're, you're exactly right. I think you could bet a tiny bit, yeah, okay, but no.
I don't think that thing is good here cuz he checks plenty of aces.
Yeah, he checks aces, but he also, he also has some like queens and jacks, those would be our value targets.
I think we could bet now.
Once he checks twice.
Two ten.
Topper's gonna bet occasionally, it's gonna check a lot.
That's small, maybe it's ten, okay.
Yeah, too many aces.
It's thin, yeah.
True thing.
About a case probably also, King Queen.
Um, I don't like calling this.
This is a pretty sweet.
Race.
I three better fold from this spot.
What's your percentage?
I think a solver is gonna three bet like eighty percent of the time and it's probably gonna mix calling.
Yeah, I was gonna say that forty, uh we're back to forty and um you have like a fairly polarized range here, right? Like you call with a lot of like suited jacks, like King Jack suited type stuff, King Queen suited? And then you're bet with your worst ones.
I'm betting small.
Yeah, I'm between betting and checking.
Yeah, I think checking is fine too with all our backdoor draws.
We look.
We're gonna stab a lot here and I would want to bet more with just like even more with lower overcards, you know, with like a ten nine that gets.
It's a, it's our worst king though, so.
We look at the aggregated reports and then per board and then model.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna stab a lot for sure. You're gonna have bets. But yeah, so even here, still checking fifty. This is not our card, we do not need to keep barreling.
What would you do with King nine of clubs?
Interesting.
I would always bet King nine of clubs. I'm giving up with this.
I think we need to bet it.
I think we have to.
I think if you're betting this, you're just, you're just over bluffing.
Really breaks his range.
I agree with Tim, you're over, you you want clubs if you're barreling again, you don't wanna continue with hearts or diamonds.
Or spades, of course.
Yeah, clubs or spades.
Spades would be nice.
Yeah, makes sense.
Also, if you had a five or a three in hand, like you should have some ace fives, some ace three, cool.
I get aces to fold.
Do you guys wanna check?
I'm pure checking here.
Kinda, yeah.
Not good. Wow, alright.
Still.
I guess we're gonna have a lot of sevens, eights, nines in range, right?
Not enough though, it'd be fair all range.
Who else? Cuz we looked at the aggregated reports and it said bad purple on low cards.
Yeah, but like is our whole raise betting?
Yeah.
Nah, this is probably one, this has to be getting near the bottom.
Three quarters, we're only checking twenty five.
Yeah, look what we have to bet there.
It's fifty fifty, basically.
I'll, I'll already fold it because I think he has to fold ace high if we bet on turn.
Fifty fifty?
Like nine eight.
Barely, we're barreling our nines and then what, a suited tens, can you pull those up?
So look, it comes from here, basically.
I know, but I, we need to see the rain.
Hang on, now it's different. Let me see.
Yeah, so polarized.
How do they put these cards in order? I don't get it, but. Because the order changes every time.
Yeah. Sometimes it's been by a certain action.
Louis, you have it set for check up top.
But it's not actually sorted by check. You can see the check frequency goes up and down.
Go by cards.
Okay.
Alright, that's fine.
So still the same pattern when it's a low card. We bet purple.
If you're betting, you're polarized, yeah.
Yeah, we're super polar.
But you're still checking around half the time.
Yeah, well.
So, pull up a suited tens.
Call it, call it thirty five percent.
Yeah, maybe forty percent.
Can you pull up the suited tens? Like nines make sense cuz he doesn't really have nines in range, so no, like in, in the, what we're betting. Like which suits are we betting on the suit, on, on the suited tens? Jack ten, queen ten, king ten?
So Nick, you're basically right that uh the hearts and diamonds are worse, it's just not a huge effect.
I mean, it's pretty big when you get the suited tens, it's just the suited nines, the nine blockers are relevant.
Yeah.
It's just the, it's the bottom of the range, so you're betting it.
What you're saying, Nick, is hearts and diamonds are worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we think that he's gonna float hands like H Jack of hearts, right? Check call.
What's, what's the equities? We still have a decent amount of value here, but they still have the nut advantage, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, since we didn't three bet them, yeah, they would still, but then are they checking?
You can see it on the right, equities run close fifty one to forty eight. You can see it on the right of the screen right now.
Our ranges condense be- because we have more pairs in range, uh or. Our, our range has more pairs proportional to his range.
Right.
He has the better pair.
And then like someone else is putting out, he checks, so that changes his range a bit till we didn't condense it any further on the turn.
He's gonna jam.
So but no nut advantage, so we don't jam, right?
No, I was saying he was gonna jam, he was gonna check race jammas.
Ah.
We're gonna polar and he's just gonna.
I mean, this is a brick. We gotta just stack off here or what are we gonna do?
Yeah, I'm wondering the same thing.
I'm checking out.
I'm pure jamming.
Cuz like, let's look at some of the factors. It's nice to unbox spades, right? That we're happy about that. Um we don't expect that he has tons of Queen X. What are, what are our bluff targets? We're trying to get him off ace king.
I don't think we can call.
So the queen improves our range too cuz we browse some queens, so now we have all the other pairs we had, plus we pair our queen some, so we got even more value than we had on the turn, so we gotta find some bluffs.
He called two streets and one of them was really polar.
But dude, what about like, what about ace king of spades on his hand? I know that's only one combo, but like ace king of spades is a reasonable hand for him to have and I think we can get him off of it.
It's one of our best clubs.
Yeah, just ship it. I'm, I'm convinced cuz I think.
I think we have to.
We have enough value, but we have to ship this.
I'm checking here, you guys wanna ship it?
Yeah.
Let's go.
I think we have to, but I'm checking it out too.
Oh.
Just flop.
Rebuy the bottom.
Wonderful bluff, guys, keep it up.
Hope your results.
Man, all the guys in the games I played, they would be fast playing that and I would have probably folded flop.
Yeah, yeah, don't be results oriented.
I know.
Well, I meant the LP. No, you're right, they definitely play, you know, check raising that huge. Good flush draw on the board, man, they're scared.
With top. I'm scared of flush draw. Oh, man. Oh, god, Ken, you can tell you play live cuz you, you know that they're all afraid of the flush draw, god. Uh, I think we can check this hand. I don't know, the backdoors are okay. We, we, we make some straights and some flushes.
I wanna bet because we have a spade.
Yeah, the Jack spades, I think it's a good card here.
But it's like, it is kinda mergey cuz like, we're expecting that we get called by hands like ace nine, ace eight. Ten nine. Oh.
Easy.
Fold.
Get me out of here. Alright. We kinda saw this one before, you can three bet this.
There's two bets.
Yep, sixty percent.
Bet twenty five?
Why? You have a nine here, you don't have a spade?
Yeah.
You wanna protect your end of it, huh?
I think the backdoors, the spade is not hugely relevant at forty. It's starting to become kind of a neutral factor.
I mean, this is not a great, great investment spot.
I think it's okay. He'll, he'll call us one with, with some hands that were beating some ace highs and pocket sevens and pocket eights and King Jack. You don't have to bet it all the time, you can check it, checking it's fine. But I'm gonna put my, I'm gonna put my stake down, check seventy, boom.
Yeah, better, better checks, huh? Yeah, check back.
Uh, no, I think if we check flop, I think the value of his hand, and after he checks again, the value of his hand improves significantly.
Now we can do both.
Thirty three, fifty five.
That's more, yeah.
Cuz like, you know, I think he's gonna have some hands like.
Yeah, ace highs, yeah.
Jack nine, ten nine as well, low pairs that feel like they need to bluff catch.
Makes sense.
That's a factor I definitely look for in live games. People, I mean, I do this too, but people feel like they have to bluff catch after they've checked, like, well, I induce, like, you could be bluffing with anything now. So when you think that there are second best hands in his range, you've got to find the bet.
Majority three bet, yeah.
Yeah, man.
I guess it's hijack, lowjack now instead. I think the last couple of times we were undergun one.
Yeah.
Lowjack, hijack?
Yeah, exactly. I wanna raise this.
Raise the guns.
Yeah, I wanna raise it. Yeah, yeah, gutter, backdoor, like this is everything I want for a raise, three to a straight. Or to a straight, three to a flush. We can, he stabs with some random crap here, some ace high, some mid pairs sometimes. Those are pretty easy to get folds from. And then we're gonna pull raise the shit out of it and we're gonna get him off of single pair hands by river. Let's go.
Big size, eighty three, forty four.
I'm just calling here. Maybe I'm wrong, say it again.
It's okay, I mean.
I think seventy raising and thirty calling it probably.
Me, it's an easy call.
I was gonna be wrong.
So when you wanna raise so much here again, Tim, gut shot, over card?
Why? I mean, yeah, it's like a low equity hand, like, um. It's, this is kind of bottom of our range too, like we, you know, a lot of our hands in our range have a single pair. Um this hand is gonna make when we're a hundred effective, we want hands that are gonna make nutty hands by river. This kind of like wrapped around it, it's gonna make a bunch of. And I think this turn is indicative of that. We now have an open ender, we're gonna make the nuts on queens or on sevens, like. It's less about what you have right now and more about what you're gonna have after a lot of bets go in. And when a lot of bets go into this hand, we are gonna be doing pretty well. This one's not that fun. Um we just called. I don't really wanna bluff an open ender on the turn. I just wanna realize. Nope, just hold, holy shit.
Oh, because maybe it's the size.
We went pretty polar, right?
I mean, yeah, but I figured we'd still just.
And we have applied out, but if, if you make our hand, we're not gonna get paid probably.
Oh, he was bluffing.
You said it.
Get the nuts. You raised this one a lot.
I think we just check this one back.
I agree. Doesn't have.
Is it?
Interesting.
Cause we can get called by worst ace since here.
I think it's really thin though. Okay. Okay, so it's in there.
Well, it's probably either or. It's gonna be okay.
I wanna keep checking back. Oh, my God.
Another.
No polar.
The queen, right?
I mean, sure, but it's just like the idea of sliding this hand into our betting range.
We're getting caught by worst, uh, ace six.
I know if I was in the low jack there, I hit a queen on the turn. I'd probably check as well.
I guess it thinks that he has a lot of like. King, jack, jack ten. That with the gutter or straight draw can call. I don't know. Uh, we mainly raised this one. It's a very low call. What? Fifty-five percent?
It's under the gun opening.
I know, but. I know, but still. Good God.
It, it calls queens and jacks a lot with under the gun opening.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm here for the jacks. I'm just.
That's why, that's why I'm here today then, because I never call with queens.
Like jacks, I would. Queens, I'm just not, just not calling it. Check.
Easy check back.
Yeah.
Queen and spade, do you bet?
Little bit, not, but still, I think that the fact that it's an underpair dominates and you made me check it.
Queen and spade, then you don't bet.
You bet a little bit more, I saw, but still not, not a lot. Keep on checking.
One big.
Go back that big. I wanna go back, back.
Now I get value here, no? He's not checking a king twice.
Okay, but the thing is.
I mean, a low frequency, he will be, yeah, but, but yeah, so we can get.
I think we're only getting one street of value.
But that kind of tells me that it could be nice to get that street now, because he has some straight draws and some spades that can call us now that won't call in river.
Yeah.
I don't hate it.
And, and if we bet now, we're almost guaranteed to get a check. Two in the river.
I'm sorry, I don't understand this check. Yeah, that's fine. I bet one hundred percent.
Then I can go on board. We have queens.
Yeah, but he checks too fast, so.
Yeah, he couldn't.
Does have a king.
We think he's out of kings, but he's not. That's why we.
Yeah, the solver, the solver definitely still has kings.
Now has a straight.
Yeah, now we check.
Nah.
Value bet?
Yeah.
You can't value bet on a four liner. It still checks fifty-one percent.
Yeah, it's, it's bad stress, so can do both. And if he raises, then it's not fun.
Wow, spicy call.
Especially with a queen in his hand.
Right? Uh, okay, well, it's, it's gonna be a. Pretty much just a call. Yeah.
We even have some.
I know these, these mid pairs, yeah, they, they three bet them at a low frequency.
Uh. Cool. Easy call.
Hmm. I don't know if that's, it's that easy.
I think it's easy.
Yeah, well.
Why would you fold?
Because the king I born. It's under the gun and he's going polar. When he's going polar like that's like frustration. It's like we missed one street, I gotta catch back my street of value.
I, I don't, I guess I wouldn't characterize fifty-five percent as hyper polar, I mean.
If you bet seven or, or nine or something, that's something else, but four, I'm going for you.
With the diamond, it's a.
Do you see people betting seven or nine here usually, Roger?
Sometimes. Not much.
I actually, I use that lesson tournaments because like ICM often means that I wanna go a little smaller, but in cash games, I use that a lot, like after, after they failed to float bed in position. I'm like, okay, you have a bunch of marginal crap, so I'm gonna like go one hundred and ten percent pot with my value blocks.
Theory wise, it depends on the board. Um, with the five bringing in a straight, you don't bet large.
Yeah, but we don't have four six here, and he doesn't either. So I don't think there's a straight.
Ace four.
Ace four.
Ace, yeah, that's, that's the only combo there. But what he, he, he doesn't open ace four from under the gun, only suited us.
Yeah, ace four suited is in his range.
Yeah, so yeah, there's not much combos. That's what I meant to say.
But it's still a combo.
Yeah, but not, not a big part of the range.
If he has one straight. In range.
I was.
It lowers the bet.
And I was gonna say, I think, I think pretty standardly, uh. Yeah, again, after that, that we check flop, he is gonna have a decent number of big bets on most boards. Um.
Yeah, it's just when. When the equity can. On a board where the equity can shift, because we have ace four suited too.
Yep, exactly.
So.
You don't, you don't want to.
No, I think, I think there's a, there's an idea that Andrew Brokis has been on a couple of times in recent podcasts. I think it's worth saying here. Um, our in position check is more honest than his out of position check. Therefore, after we both check flop, we are more capped than he is, because he can have like ace, king, aces, sets of kings there. And we don't really check those, we don't really check those hands in position.
I like hitting those big bets, because I look for it all the time. When you're out of position and it goes check, check. Quite often you can bet a hundred fifty percent on the turn.
Right. Exactly.
But not when the equity can shift with a card.
But I looked up that spot and, um. Uh, it, you actually, they still have some, some bets that are that big, um. With stuff like pocket fives. Um.
Yeah, for protection.
With stuff like ace, king. With stuff like aces. On that last board. Pocket threes and pocket deuces. They figure like we very rarely have kings or fives or ace four and like so sets of the nuts. And they wanted to go for a check raise on flop, so they're gonna go for a huge bet on turn.
Going too fast. Oh, sneaky check back.
What do you wanna do, L P D?
Ace queen suited is single raised. Uh, I wanna bet that's almost always in position. Yeah.
It's mixing. Most of it's.
Easy call.
Yep.
It's gonna have pocket eights.
Especially with the backdoor. This is not the type of hand that I'm gonna three bet against his. Oh, my God.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Always to fold.
Whoa, whoa.
I'm falling there.
Button clicker, button clicker.
He's gonna have, he's gonna have a set. He's gonna have pocket sevens, or he's gonna have pocket eights, or he's gonna have eight, seven, or eight, eight.
Or, or a flush.
Or nothing.
Like, wow.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's my, uh. Sometimes I snap the bot.
Clicker, no clicking. Alright, H Jack suited is like, um, mainly just a call here.
Yeah.
Check back.
Heck.
Hmm.
I do gotta say though, in the lower stakes, when you call your ace queen suited and you hit an ace on the flop in position, you check it back. They never, never think you have an ace.
That's true.
I've gotten so much value from people like overvaluing their queens and kings with it on an ace high flop after you check back.
Yeah. I can sense nearly always call. Kind of.
Low spade.
Without a spade, it's pretty shitty.
But it's like, like a low bets. I think you still have to call here.
No spade, no call.
You over it now, just fold.
No call.
I want to add a set on the flop. We, we can call.
Don't call, some call.
We even, we even, we're crazing some.
Scotty wants to call. Scotty wants to call.
I'm camp call, call camp.
Oh, no.
If you bet big on the turn, we have an easy call.
Oh, look at this.
And yeah, you're, you're gonna drill it sometimes, right?
Oh.
Yeah. Still have position, cannot blast.
No.
Wow, he checks the nuts on the turn at river.
A position, so.
Maybe, maybe we win sometimes there, but then we just, uh.
I never double check the nuts.
Not me, you know.
I would check the turn, but if it goes check, check, I, I gotta try for value.
We can three bet this. Let's go. You have a good.
Like a bet here with the back door and then. Yeah. We spike a nine here. We just. We, we're loving life. We got a heart. We can barrel on.
Yeah, yep, again.
We've got lots of nines in ranges. We can barrel on a ten. We can barrel on a five.
Hands that will make very strong hands by river. There's with the backdoors and the gutter, like this hand is gonna river the nuts sometimes, so that's great. I don't really wanna check. I don't really wanna bet this. This.
Yeah. Me either.
Sucks.
Mostly.
Two hundred percent.
Uh, not finding the two hundred percent. Yeah.
Or, or the one twenty-five.
Yeah, eighty-five can do properly. That this stack there, I will find it sometimes.
But we will be betting our flush draws on the flop.
Yeah.
We might be betting a seven.
Okay, so we did river a hand. It's not a very good hand.
Nope.
But this is part of why we like betting flop, because even on bad rivers, we still will make sort of. Okay, hands sometimes. Can you value bet it?
I think this.
No, you can't value it.
But if we, we didn't have the straight, I think we should bluff.
Yeah, I agree. So yeah, check, check and win.
Twenty-five.
This one, yeah.
Twenty-five percent.
Maybe it's very small size. But.
I think betting twenty-five is just begging to be bluff.
But there, there was another worse hand that can, can call us here. To bet small.
Seven X, seven X can bluff catch.
Ace seven, yeah.
Nine, eight, but double blocks, um. Double box boats, maybe.
Yeah, then we have to bet like ten percent, I guess.
Oh, my God, Louis, that sizing's so bad. Fifty-nine percent. That sizing's so bad.
He's never gonna raise us, though, that's.
Louis, how do you get talked into a bet? This is a clear check.
Also a bet of that size.
And yeah, small, very.
That's a flush.
Huh?
How often is he working?
Does he show a flush?
A lot.
Fifty, fifty percent of the time.
About. Calling ranges has more spades than not in it, like.
I feel like a good flush, it would block. A weak flush, it would block. And nine, it would block.
Louis, you're, you're just assuming unbalanced play from the solver out of position. The, the solver is gonna give you balanced play out of position. It's, uh, it's hard to play.
And then the only hands that I think he wouldn't block. We block with the ten.
Okay, Louis.
Nah.
Let, let's go back to.
But what are you thinking?
Value bluff question. Is anything worse gonna call your bet?
Exactly.
Pa- pocket fives.
Also not. When it. We lose.
Right, like pocket fives. We, we already named him ace seven. It's super thin. You gotta go small if you wanna get called by stuff that junkie. Alright.
No flush, this is gonna fold.
Now before.
He has a boat.
Boat, wow.
On the turn, on that last one. I thought that when the flush comes in, that it pushes our bet size down, and the preferred sizes were over bets there. I thought when the flush.
I know.
Bet smaller. Stick wrong, is that just, that's just an aberration?
On a four liner, it changes.
Oh, four liner, not on the, not on.
Because you're gonna have a lot of hands that wanna bluff too.
Alright, so we saw this queens, um, call sixty, right? Raise forty.
Well, yeah, fifty, fifty.
I can't remember if we were deeper or we were at forty.
We were a hundred, so that.
We're probably gonna be raising this one.
Raising more, yeah.
I was thinking, yeah.
And plus.
Seventy-five.
We were in low jack last time.
I think it's more like.
Slightly better position.
Oh, it's about the same.
Okay.
Raised fifty-five. This is a pretty good bet.
Yeah, it's just bet.
I wanna go. How often is he checked? I mean, really, most of his continuing ranges. So how often do we check on this board? Or with his hand?
On this board with this hand.
I don't wanna check this hand that often.
You sure?
I wanna mostly, I wanna mostly. Yeah, but this hand, this, this hand is both strong and it has the potential to draw, and there are lots of like clear targets. He has hands like. King, jack, ace, ten, pocket jacks.
Queen, jack.
Yeah, we're. We're in great shape.
That.
We're in great shape. Ace, jack, king, jack, ace, ten, king, ten, like, he just has a lot of stuff here.
But we have to bet small because there's completed equity on the board. I'm hoping.
You know, small. I'm thinking about fifty-five.
Fifty-five is not small.
I think fifty-five, thirty-three makes sense.
We're right.
Yep, all the size.
Yep. I mean, yeah, like I would say completed equity makes you not wanna go huge, but fifty-five is often still. Okay. This is a pretty frequent three bet. I think it's like fifty-fifty.
Yeah. Majority.
Majority three bets seventy, thirty. We kind of saw so much spot before with the six deuce, deuce. Uh, we do wanna stab this one some. It's not mandatory. We're gonna stab a lot of hands in our range.
Uh, I think we bet the most here. On fair boards.
Yeah, which is not a hundred. The most does not mean a hundred.
If we would have a spade, we would bet even more often.
Yeah, especially a hundred big blinds, because that single, single flush card matters a lot.
We don't have a part of the suit. We don't have a queen, but we block it, and the queen is great for the call in position.
So I think monotone is a pretty dominant factor here.
With the spade, it would be an insta bet, but as it is. Well, hmm, I would bet.
Yeah, I think I would check.
Yeah, it's a bet.
Mainly betting.
It's a bet because of the queen, whenever, whenever we call in position here and the queen appears, seems to be really good for our betting range.
It's a two hundred percent bet.
Yeah, I don't find that.
Yeah. But they.
But fifty-five is fine.
In the alternative, though, the flush hit, which is usually better for the post flop. Caller.
Caller, huh?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what, that's what got me. The queen's a good card to bet, but the flush.
Holy shit, we got it.
The flush seemed bad to bet.
Alright, you can three bet this one. The rebet, I don't know. Thirty percent.
Yeah, this one I like to pull the trigger on. Oh, what are you doing? Just calls today?
Yeah, yeah, he wants to do mostly just calls. Uh, I wanna bet this hand like. Nearly all the time.
Oh.
And I wanna go bigger, like I wanna go.
Yeah, we haven't find a good spot where it was betting big.
We saw it. The queens was willing to go fifty-five.
Queens was like the only one, right?
Yeah, but I think there's a similar spot with the, the double straight drop board, two-tone.
What do you think you do with pocket ten, sir?
I'm thinking about that sixty-six.
Cause before today with pocket ten, I would always bet sixty-six or something like that. And now I'm like, pocket ten wants to check or bet small.
We, I mean, it's true with across range, we have a lot of bets malls. We will have some. Like bigger bets, and I think this hand is a pretty good candidate for it. Um, also, bet smalling can't be, it can't be a mistake.
I really want to bet. But I think it's a check. It's a bet small.
That's all.
Which which flushes do we wanna put in our check back range? The middle aces?
More like nuts, I think.
I mean, which flush drops a bit, of course.
I think the ace high ones.
None.
Cuz like ace queens suited doesn't. Doesn't get that much worse to fold when it, when it bluffs here. It's not even really bluff, but anyway, when it bets here, like, it's hard to get him full the pair. So you're kinda just. Inflating the pot when you're fifty fifty. Whereas betting queen ten, we can get him off of some king high and ace high.
Yeah, so it looked like to me that the ace three checks the most. Because with its showdown value. Ace. And this is, this is just the spades, right? Good. The ace three selects the most, and everybody does it a little bit. And there's no.
Yep.
There's nothing particular to learn from which ones do it a little bit.
Uh, I think ace queen does it a notably high amount.
Okay.
Ace queen's like fifty fifty, and some of the other ones are betting like seventy-five to ninety percent.
Good.
What I've noticed was the more ICM concerns you out. This behavior is going on the opposite direction. If you see this exact spot at the final table or. An ICM bubble is going the other way around. It's not gonna check, it's gonna not gonna. It's gonna go aggressive.
I I would never check back the eight-ten there, and it did. It had some of the eight-ten of spades.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen that in solves before.
Yeah, that's a.
So he. So he donks. Um. I don't know, calling is obviously fine, I'm thinking about raising as well. Okay, well, he made it easy on us, we have a fold. Well, he played very honestly. You can three bet this one. Twenty-five percent of the time, thirty percent. Yep. I think one of my takeaways today is just that uh you mix more at a hundred. Lots of your stuff is mixing. Yeah, it's throughout a thirty-three percent. He's got a lot of like ace high and king high that can call us once. Yeah, we folded out a little bit of equity from ace six, denied him that one overcard, it's fine. King, queen. I don't know, solver probably wants to call, I'm not really that excited to take. Offsuit hands post-flop with an SPR of infinite. Yeah, okay, so mixing folding, that's. I believe that. Stabbing's probably okay, he doesn't have to work very often to bet thirty-three, but I would rather do it with the state.
It was a small.
Whatever, it's gonna check a fair bit, it's gonna, it's gonna stab a little bit.
Yeah. Probably more check than I would bet.
Well, my majority is time. I'm surprised he's come so often without the spade.
I know, without the suit and SPR of freaking fifteen.
Yeah.
Or fourteen, I guess. Okay, well, this is, this is the kind of turn card that we were hoping to see, um. I kinda wanna. I don't know.
I wanna, I wanna overbet now.
Barreling is can be good, but um. It also, I mean, we. An open-ended straight draw on the turn is sometimes good enough to just. Check back and realize, like a gutter would be. Kind of more exciting for me to. To bet with.
Barrel, barrel. I would like that, I would big, yeah, one of twenty-five, I would go.
So big, that's a good, good thing, get, take this big if you're gonna take it. I would have never.
On the pressure, but pocket tens, ace seven, uh. And then all the.
So. Pretty sweet that we don't block spades, we have no showdown value.
Triple, triple.
Nine-eight is not particularly relevant. Um, I think we need to blast it. We're trying to get him off, what, like ace ten?
Yeah.
So turn, we went one twenty-five, I can imagine going all in.
Or eighty-six, all in.
I'm thinking about it. I mean, is is rebuy still open?
I think it says buy-in.
Yeah, if the buy is twenty-five, I'm just checking.
Is this, is this a five K?
If it, if it gets staked, I'm checking also.
What are you talking about? I'm staked, I'm going all in.
I wanna bet, but at the same time.
I have a piece in my package, guys.
On the turn.
Uh, yeah, that's the thing, we went polar, like.
Well, polar on the turn, and he called us, right? So. He's either got a good hand or he's got a flush draw.
Ah, but he can have like ace, he can have like ace nine of spades, he can have like ace jack, he can have some like kinda hands that we're gonna. Make miserable.
Queen, Jack, king, queen.
Ten-nine suited is like a.
Yeah.
I kinda wanna go for it after going big on turn, like, what are we waiting for?
Oh, one, one, or a check.
Oh, I I was muted. I was saying.
You were talking the whole time.
Reentry period, you got rebuy.
Rebuy, okay, let's go. Alright, here's my question on this one, uh, what percentage do you flat, if any?
I've started slotting a little bit more with ace king. A little bit.
Can we get it?
At forty, at forty big blinds here, I think we're probably, this is probably gonna be. Um, some percentage of an all-in. And I'd probably say. Probably seventy percent. Three bet.
I don't think we have all-ins against. UCG one, I think you'd have them in late position.
We just call.
Flat thirty-five.
So I guess all-ins would maybe just around thirty, I think.
And late position, like small blind B button, you have some, but you don't really have any like hijackers as UTG.
Just call.
Yeah, calling, calling seems fine.
I don't think we have many ranges or raises on a monotone board.
And and this ain't the, this ain't the hand, like one pair with a good draw, like, just. All, realize. Yeah, keep calling, we beat, we beat buffs, we beat some other stuff, we have good equity. Yeah, there's like no hand that we're dead against, if he has sats, if he has made flushes, we're just live, we're fine. That was not the river card we were looking for.
Uh.
We do still block an important component of his value range, cuz his value range on this line should be a lot of king-high flushes. So the king of spades is a really, really, really important card. Yep.
Those call.
UTG. Okay, so we're just free rolling him, that's fine. Okay, we should try and name the three bet percentages on these hands, three bet fifty. I'm considering throwing out a bet with ace queen, I think we can get some folds from under pairs sometimes, that would be.
Fair boards and mono bars are the best, so we bet for sure.
I mean, I don't know, but like, let's say bet fifty percent, check fifty percent.
More like uh seventy percent bet.
Louis, this is our best unpaired hand that might check.
And that's the thing, maybe, it's like if we're, if we're betting, we wanna deny him like pocket fours. That's the goal. Alright, I said bet fifty, and it's bet sixty, that's, that's fine. After betting and getting called, I think this has been downgraded to a very clear. Marginal made hand for us, we still have equity, we can still hit on the river. Yeah, just one check. I don't really wanna barrel this hand. I do wanna barrel some hearts. Some like, oh my God, solver's such a fish.
Hmm, he's betting a lot, huh?
Oh, my God.
How is it betting so much? Oh, yeah, I remember, it's a low card.
I mean, sure, I understand barreling with parts of range, but like I wanna do it value and bluffs, and like just how does this hand fit into?
Low card, you gotta go purple.
But like with ace queen, that's, that's my, my hangup is about this hand.
I think it's a, the, if you bet the dark. You gotta go.
I mean, I I get that, but that's why I wanna check this hand, like betting ace ten, I'm at least a little bit more okay with. Weird.
Like, it's the only bet size, right?
Yeah, pretty much. That's weird.
I'm guessing with the ace queen. And the paired board and the blank turn. Saber still thinks ace queen's a value bet.
I don't even, who's to say what the software's thinking? Never seen a big fish in my life.
I call the ace queen suited more than ace queen all.
Uh, yeah, I think that's good, I think ace queen, ace jack. Are pretty appealing calls here. Are like suited jacks and suited queens generally are calling a lot, even though I'm suited tens, and then starting at suited tens, suited nines, we threw that a lot.
Well, that all depends on who opens.
I mean, yeah, I mean, in this, in this, in this arrangement, good versus UTG one.
Yeah, like if the low jack opened. We wouldn't wanna hit the suited nines.
I think we check a little bit more here.
Don't we know, we still threw that suited nines against low jack, I'm pretty positive.
Well, we bet more often than we check.
I'm looking up now, yeah, against, against low jack, we're like three betting suited ten suited nines. It's a thin call if you call this check raise. Um. Probably correct.
I would defend every other suit before the clubs.
Oh, yeah, definitely, exactly, I mean, every other suit, definitely. But this one still depends. Three bet him, three bet him, three bet him.
Wanna raise?
It's in there.
He's gonna shove. Now you can't call.
It's only a one dollar buy-in, Matt, he's just screwing with us. It's got.
He could be bluffing. Alright, so three bet that one. When your shortest act, you three bet it lasts only twelve percent. I think you can check back your straight flush draw sometimes. It's a very high equity hand.
But actually, right now, if he check raises us, I think we're okay with it.
Yeah, we can go on it.
Oh, hundred percent.
I mean, agreed, it's just like, you just, you're running it a lot with like fifty percent equity, which is like not what the solver's trying to do when it constructs ranges, it wants to polarize, you know?
Check or bet three?
Or bet fifty-five? Makes sense, I think of these, sometimes it's like. How you do it, like in position versus big blind, and king, queen, four is a board where if you were in position, you would also have some like fifty-five percent bets, you know? So. Kind of the same here.
Now I think we bet like thirty-three percent.
I don't know.
You have to go check, check, and the the river is a blank, what are we gonna do?
Yeah, I mean, that sucks, uh.
Halfly donated. Or big blind call.
I'm, you, what are we gonna do? I mean, one answer is you got to see all five cards for cheap, which is kinda sweet when you have a big draw. Um.
I think I just sort of wanna check back and realize equity.
I mean, that's the way I'm leaning, um.
But I don't think a bet's gonna be wrong here.
Yeah, it goes.
It's just, we're just, we're gonna have to bet big. Like, we don't have small bets. So do we wanna invest, you know? Seven, eight big blinds of our forty big blind stack?
We have an easy fold?
Now we have a fold, and he's gonna show us a pair of queens.
Or an unknotted.
So, I actually looked down real quick, my phone buzzed, um. What did it say to do on the turn?
Uh, check fifty, bet big sometimes.
So, but even on twenty-five?
I was, I was mixed.
Yep, check fifty, bet fifty, use a polar size. Makes sense, cuz we're trying to get him off of like hands like what, under pairs, pocket tens, pocket nines are sort of our bluff target there.
For those good that we didn't bet at all, cuz he wasn't gonna fold ace queen there.
No. And I think a good player just, just has hands like that a lot. Okay, so we flopped the world, but the fact that it's our made hand is a second pair makes me wanna just check.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Um, well, that's.
What, what are we afraid of?
Or worse yet, what are we trying to get?
We're gonna get value.
Like, I think. But I think you just get called by hands like king, jack, ace, jack. Like.
Yeah.
You have equity against them, but like. Not that excited to build this pot. I wanna build this pot with value and bluffs when we're a hundred big blind.
No.
Uh, I wanna call two pair on a four liner is not a value hand. But obviously. Obviously, we have, we have outs, we have tons of outs to good hands. That was not one of them.
That is the worst card for us.
That is the worst kind of deck, we lose to all kings, all eights. All better jacks, all boats.
I think the nine, nine's worse than the queen.
Well, no. Raise it, cuz we have, we have a double boat blockers.
It's raising pretty big, right?
Yeah.
It's like what you would do if you had pocket jacks.
I'm not, I'm not finding.
We, we got him.
Did he call? I think he called, no?
No, he called.
He folded eight.
We had him beat, we had him beat, though.
No, we didn't, he had a straight.
Yeah, he had a straight.
Queen, Jack, ten, nine, eight, he have straight. He folded bottom straight to. Our range that should include for value boats.
He did, I don't think our opponent.
And probably some kings too, we probably have a king in our range.
Mean tens suited at forty is gonna be mainly, mainly a call. We wanna be a little bit more polar here. You can stab this one a lot, you have a lot of like backdoors going for you over cards, but queen high doesn't have much showdown value, so it's a, a nice little stabby stab. Thirty-three, maybe, you even go fifty-five, I think.
Thirty-two.
Probably gonna check close to half the time.
I think we bet the spades and the hearts a little bit.
Yeah, yep. Yep, okay, so I said check half, but it's check thirty-five, that's fine.
And then two.
We call?
Easy call.
I I think I guess population, it's just not full.
Uh, I don't know, cuz it's, it's just so small, and there's a lot of turn cards you like to see, holy shit. Four, fuck my life.
That's not so small anymore.
I've, I've been looking at, you know, how I like do a lot of like database reviews, I import a lot of hints from other players. Been looking, looking at. Even database from very good players, and no one is hitting the check raise target.
Yep. No. Fair enough.
So even the good players.
Forty big blinds. This could find a call still, it can raise, I think it.
We also could probably raise.
Alright, fifty. Okay.
Fifty, yeah.
Would you go, would you say a good idea is to three bet offsuit and call the suited ones in this spot?
No, uh.
Then three bet offsuit against.
You can pull up, you you three bet a little bit of like ace clean off, ace jack off. Um, then on the suited side, you call a lot of suited jacks, suited queens, you start to three bet. Your lower suited ace is more like nine, eight, seven.
Sure, you'd like to check or bet small.
Either one's fine.
Check probably.
We got a lot of hot half pot in there, too.
Uh, you can three bet this, you can call this.
What's the percentage? I'm gonna say forty percent three bet.
Uh, wow, hundred.
It's forty pegs under the gun, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Scott, it's using, it's using nine, eight, seven.
Check.
Okay, monotone board, maybe we can bet?
How about not?
Okay. Seems kinda shit.
Actually, bets more than checks.
Yeah.
I looked up, I looked up a pre-flop range, and yeah, we're three betting ace nine, ace eight, eight, seven, king, ten, king, nine.
Make sure we bet the most here. Uh, pair boards and monotone.
Cuz I guess we're just hoping he has a lot of auto folds.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we got a fold.
Now, uh.
Yeah, we got wrecked.
Get wrecked.
Oh, my. Oh my goodness.
Pocket four. Oh my god.
Okay, let's reply with. Let's answer with flattening queens.
Versus U T G, call fifty fifty.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, starting to get towards a raise.
But that's what I was, my first inclination was.
But there's still a lot of poker to play. Okay, so we're very happy that he bet flop, check turn. The question is, I think our range has some thirty threes. I can see going.
Wanna bet thirty three, I think here we wanna go.
Hands like this.
I wanna bet fifty seven.
Um, I think, I think we wanna put hands like ace king in the box. There's only one card to come, of course, so, uh. I think ace king is gonna be a little sick with some sizings.
Disagree.
He should have, why, you think he just snap calls? You think he's just rocking it?
I don't think he's gonna struggle against a small bet.
I think we're gonna bet eighty three or one twenty five. Yeah, I'm.
That, more than fifty five, thirty three, me too, yeah.
Maybe fifty five because the board's paired. Oh.
It's the same that we see on the flop. He's balanced and he's gonna have check races here, so we give him a little stab. We don't, we like, don't go, don't go ham. He still has aces and kings in this range.
Yeah.
Not in the games I play.
I mean, fair enough.
Is the betting with the queen suit oriented? They get aces or kings, they're just piling. I mean, pocket queens.
Yeah.
Spades and diamonds.
Yeah, without the heart, the heart is more willing to see a river card because it's a little more comfortable.
Yeah, the heart isn't betting.
But I think, I think betting small can have nice, um, consequences in a live game, too. You get people that then like. Check raise you with king, jack or something. They're like, oh, he wouldn't have bet big with a value hand, so like, I'm gonna check raise him, like this little, this kid is just aggressive. He's just trying to steal the pot.
Can we raise it?
Checks turn and then bets river like sixty percent. I think it's right on the line.
Maybe.
Yep.
Nice call with the sizing too.
Good size.
I'm curious if he rips it.
Okay, so he was just on a blow. At forty big blinds, this is gonna call what, seventy? Yep, seventy seven.
No spade.
You could stab this a little bit, but.
King is pretty bad for us, but this is the kind of texture that we saw that we might bet a little bit on, but we need a spade or heart.
I just, across our whole range, we just bet a lot when checked too. It's like, it's. Really, it's like a lot of it's just supposed to fifty fifty, right? It's mostly around fifty fifty. You mix a lot.
Right, like if he folds anything, it's good for.
Exactly, exactly.
So you don't really need spades or hearts. You can.
Just stab a lot.
For sure, spades and hearts are better, but you can bet there once too.
Yeah, I mean, obviously a hand like ace five of spades is just the nuts here, but.
And in re, uh, in against population, we can bet even more here, right? Because they detect their check back range the way solver does.
Yep, yeah, you should overdo it by a lot.
Alright, let's overdo it.
Uh-oh.
I think that's good for our checking range, right? And then we get rid of.
We know, we just, we don't really have a lot of fours, I mean.
Do we need to bluff this, or do we just want to shake it down?
Neither player has a four much. It is, I mean, let's, let's ask. I think. I think it's, it's double check range. It has some like marginal maids in it. It has some like under pairs. It has some of his weakest kings. It has some ace highs. That's the range that I wanna attack.
Yeah, what, what, what will we do here with a pocket five, six, or sevens, or eights, for example?
Maybe you could bet small and get some protection, but.
You wanna check them?
I wanna, kinda wanna bet this.
Yeah, we got jack high.
It's kind of bottom of range for us.
Like a one and done type of thing?
No, it's gonna be a nice, if, if this flush draw doesn't come in on river, a club's hand like this is gonna be a pretty nice hand to continue bluffing.
Fifty fifty.
Uh, you don't need a lot to get done because if he has like ace nine off, like what's he doing? He's not calling.
Yeah, so we fool that these sides.
Okay, so we're bluffing with the best hand as usual. I love these spots where you think you're such a genius that you realize.
Well, if we would have three bet, he would have folded pre, right?
That's true. That's true. We had a lot of opportunities to win that pot.
Yeah.
I had to solve that and not have that.
I don't know, man, hundred big blinds. I wanna mainly continue with spades and hearts. I like that we're wrapped around the jack. And then we block hands like queen, jack and jack ten.
No suit. No suit. Yeah.
Yeah, you can, I'm surprised it's calling. I would have thought that'd be more of a raise, but okay, just call.
Such a small sizing.
Call sixes a lot, but raise twenty two percent. Who's raising? Five six is twenty two percent there.
Never. Uh, fairly smallish, ten percent probably.
Yeah.
Not great, right?
Doing better than most of us, Roger.
Depending what my three bet frequency is at that point in the tournament.
Yeah, that's fair. I just think it's nice, like you, you'll just get some folds from hands like, I'm ace ten oh, so it's worth thinking about. And if you think people's four bets are gonna be super honest, like you're just comfortable folding to a four bet, like you three bet, you get four, but you're like, whatever, no good, it's fine.
You should fold it.
Yep, but you get called, you know, you can still make a set, okay?
Yeah, it's pretty hidden, so they don't expect you to have that hand.
Yeah. Full, full, full.
Yeah, it's full.
And people live also, like, let's say you three bet, let's suppose they have like an overpair with like tens or nines on a board with a six, like they are stacking the fuck off against your set with an overpair. Like they do not hold overpairs, even shitty overpair, they do not hold them.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Alright, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.